Hello, welcome to another recording. My awakening, the Christ within journey. Still not sure what I will call this, or even if I will release these. But this morning, I am struggling on what to do with myself, my creative self. I have a bit of spare time and I want to use it wisely. But I also want to do something that I feel connected to and called towards doing. So here I am. Spinning my wheels and thinking about the lessons that I have been working on. And about this entire sort of new journey I'm on. The Jesus journal and all these workings. Looking at and talking about these more traditional kind of offerings, like the Bible. And then all the people that come along with that belief in that world. Aside from actually the teachings and from those things handed from others, what I kind of wanted to talk about today is just my own integration and my own experiences so far. As I've been sort of opening myself up to those types of conversations, types of communication in the world that is opened when you open yourself up to sort of the church-esque communities and all the catchphrases that they use. It's, it is so interesting that catchphrases, virtue signaling, like terms, inside jokes, those sort of insider references. That's so human, such a, well, maybe it's just a marker of intelligence, actually, you know? I don't know what it is really, but it's very interesting and funny and curious to me. And also slightly annoying and a bit of of an offensive kind of move, you know? It segregates, divides and creates purposefully a direct sense of otherness. It's exclusionary, secret, hidden, you know? And it's like sometimes those things can be fun and sometimes those things create camaraderie, friendship and loyalty. And, and those are beneficial, of course, but like what are they founded on is really the point? Because when, when we're only founding our togetherness on or because of some other external threat, dislike, weakness, this other thing that we are opposing for whatever reason. If we are coming together, united in that front against another, from the creation and the start of that communion space, it's negatively aligned. It's a negative surface. And sometimes, you know, I've been discovering and I've been talking about so much through those system theories, is that these things do balance each other. And we do have organically serving negatively aligned systems, plenty of them showcased in nature. But they're always well-balanced and set proportionally against positively aligned systems and actions. And that's kind of just like I was talking about before with the virtue signaling, the insider information, the inner circle, you know, the badges, the handshakes, the, all of the secret acknowledgements to know that we are of like mind. We are of something different. We have this special, different connection and knowledge point together to share. And again, it unites us in the face of otherness. And when that otherness and when the uniting becomes so secretive that we forget that at the end of the day and the end of the game, we're all part of the same whole. If we are purposely ignoring that end of the day whole for some or whatever reasons. That's truly negatively aligned. That is a real service to self. That is truly never going to come to a balance. That is going into the problem, solving, exercise, looking to mess things up on purpose. Looking to dig your heels in the ground and ask for only your side of the compromise. And no one else's. And, and that's not fair. And we build these things unfairly and we have social constructs that are, you know, they seem so natural in their unfairness. We even have these things called survival of the fittest. It's in textbooks taught to students like it's the truth in their scientific realm, in their world of academia. Their little penguin silly schools, right? Where they all waddle along in the same notion. And we wonder why, you know, we're not getting anywhere. And here I am again, talking all about externals and others and the great scope of things. And I find myself out there focused because even my inner world is sort of feeling like that stalemate and stagnation of having myself pinned against otherness. And even my inner self is pinned against myself right now, sort of. Or noticing more that there are areas of myself that are still very oppositional. It's sort of like accepting and seeing a metaphorical version of Jesus and Satan or Lucifer or whatever within you. And same thing as that devil and the angel on your shoulder kind of thing. The more of the reaching out and seeking for positive connections and and seeing also the retribution of that and getting real blessings of abundance and gifts and miracles in my life, help and assistance in ways that I just didn't imagine. Easy, fluid assistance as needed, never feeling a lack or loss, always knowing that things as they come up will be provided fluidly by infinite intelligence and by source and God, who of course is set in motion, the infinite intelligence that runs through the ether. I have seen these things come to fruition. I have felt them, I've spoken them into reality. I have asked and received and I am finding every time I seek and the seeking never ends. And so there it becomes the proof in the pudding for me. And the positive momentum, the pay for its service that I have already initiated is now 10 times 10 pays for itself. I can't deny that truth in the workings here. Just like sort of when you get wrapped up in a negative loop, you feel like you can't deny the negativity. You, it comes out of nowhere. It's not even, there's no causation for it and yet there it is, you know? It's, it's the same workings, just on different asks, you know, reflections of the playing field. And with that I mentioned as well is that the negative, that devil inside, the Satan, those shadowed aspects also, they become louder, they become more obvious. They become, well, I need to actually really do the work, more work and find out what true work really is. You know, the balancing act. And what it means to find my healthy best self. And to seek, you know, honest service for the whole of me. And that includes those weaknesses, that includes shadow points and the darker parts of me. Because, you know, they are in there, they are part of me. And with this, you know, and the owning of you and understanding what you are, of course, comes this, and this is a paralleled working, of course, because I've done this in other angles, but with the sacred boundaries and understanding what is you and what is not you. And what is what you want in your world versus what you do not want in your world and why? And, and that's what I'm discovering now with the body vessel, with the thoughts and with emotions, energies and all the other life inside of me, different conscious levels of myself and different conscious life forms within myself. We all have microbiome. This is very much known in 100 different aspects of life now. But we don't know much about it. There's so many theories and there's so much different ways to understand it, just like there's so many different ways to understand nature in the world around us. You know, there's nature within us. We eat food from outside, off of a tree and it becomes part of your cells and organs. It does work in there, you know? There's living things happening on that plant that come into your life. And that, and they also come in the form of things like bacteria, parasites, tiny life forms, worms, other kinds of life forms, perhaps that we don't really even think of sort of as living, but they do have conscious energy and they are there, they have an awareness and a purpose. They are there to do transactions and exchanges. And so we might not think of them as, you know, conscious as in thinking and human consciousness type of awareness. But they do have a spectrum of consciousness that they do conscious work on. It's just so much different than ours. It's on a whole different scale. In fact, it's the micro to our world. That's how we know that there's a flipping of spiritual lens. That's how we know there's a metaphysical, as above, so below. Through the looking glass, through the portal or a flipping of the lens, like I like to call it. A diving into deeper worlds, just like there would be if you were ever to be able to get into the macro state, into the macro world, is how we astro project and astral cords and all of these out of body experiences that feel so different. Come with a different perspective. You see yourself outside your body. You have a larger feeling of yourself. It's not constricted and confined in these three D physicality. And many people who have had those experiences or who know about remote viewing or who do astral projection or have had NDEs or alien experiences or anything like that. It's very real, it's very different. It's a flipping of lens, it's through the looking glass. It's, it's like dreamland, just like if you can lucid dream and you could, you can become aware in your dreams. It's, there's a feeling of sleepwalking. Many of us feel this and more and more of us are being able to feel the, the reality of it in life, in daily life now because of the transitions and the timelines and the shakeups that are happening with the rapid boiling. So much changing in the playscape. It's like sometimes it's dreamland and you're awake, but it feels like sleepwalking. You know, whether it's a vertigo-esque feeling or lightness or heaviness or slowness or fastness, everyone feels things differently. And sometimes in different dreams even, perhaps you've felt those different ways of how time and movement can be stretched out or sped up, even though you're consciously still kind of in that same your life, you know, you're in your moment. It's still the, you know, you're awake and aware during that, you know? Excuse me. But becoming more aware of these things, you know, is, I think, what comes with the awakening of the Christ consciousness within. Perhaps, I've said it many times, but I do think that we're supposed to get there eventually. I don't know what eventually means and I don't want to make presumptions about Jesus and/or the archetype or the caricature that he represented or the master that he is outside of space and time. But I do feel like perhaps that he was more connected to that than we are. Sort of like showing us the hundredth monkey kind of rule, you know? Showing us what we could become, that it is possible, you know? It's that one person to finally break that, you know, run. I'm gonna sound like so stupid right now at a mile, you know, in a certain amount of time. You know, it could never be beaten and then all of a sudden it was, you know? Or even like say in gymnastics, you know? You'd never believe like, oh, I could do this until you see another person. You get in the gym and you see another gymnast do, you know, double back. Double backs were something that, you know, not many people were doing back in my day. Now they're triples, you know? Same thing with the, with the twists, you know? Taking things to newer heights, but we can't do it until we've seen somebody else do it. And it's like one of the whispers that I received to Jesus one time recently in my, in my workings, you know, that how do you think we become masters? You know, by living many lives, by seeing it done, by doing it, by doing it over and over again. A path is worn by walking it. And you know, it's a hard walk. It's a slow walk when you're down here. And you have to go step by step and you have to just put one foot in front of the other every day. But as hard as it is and as difficult as it becomes, it's like, I can, it's almost a sigh of relief after I feel the difficulty because I remember the worth that's received from feeling these feelings. You know, it's like next time around, next time around, next time around. The better it gets, the better it gets. The deeper it feels, the deeper it feels. And yeah, it's catch 22. You know, that's why sometimes I feel like he says to me, it's not all it seems. It's not just that one life, you know? It's, it isn't, I didn't, I didn't know it exactly all. I think sometimes we get wrapped up in the showcase of the one character in the play, sort of that one time during, you know, the scenes. And we forget about, oh yeah, well, this is just act five, act one, scene five, and we still have five acts to go. And yeah, it's epic, yeah, it was epic. It was a huge working near, you know? Major character in the play there. But there's so many acts to go. And I think we should own our own acts and we should remember them and we should be able to live them to the fullest and be that one up. And I think he knew that by saying, you know, you will do greater than I. And so as I'm doing these, like reading his words and as I'm doing reflections on these and interpreting his input and sensing replies and feeling comebacks and things like that, you know? Of the, to, to the readings and to the words and to his the gossip really is what it is. It is gossip about him. Just like every other person, just like about if you go to read about Napoleon or Hitler or any, any person alive even today. Or even as ancientists trying to read about Pythagoras or Plato or Cleopatra, any, any of these figures. It's all hearsay and gossip. And I think we need to really remember that. And yeah, so some of these things as I'm reading them, you know, I'm feeling that. Because, you know, I think first and foremost, the peoples of the day. Now if, if we are, now this is to just say, I'm gonna get into, like I said, this is a bit of my own kind of thinkings, my own ruminations and integrations about what I've been thinking about since I started reading the Bible. I'm totally a new, lame in person. And also I'm more of, I've come from a more of an academia-based world. And I like history, I read a lot about it, but I like to keep a very open mind in reading historical references. I really like to know who paid you to write that book, who funded your trip, who funded the research. I really want to know which, where you pulled all of your sources from and, and who and why holds the real truth to the peoples and the times that you're writing about. And when you go at history in that way, as I have since probably high school and I'm, you know, I'm near 40 now, high school, I, I loved to dig into that and backtrack sources and question them and see where they came from. That was one of the biggest things that opened my eyes to World War II and into Germany and to the struggles of the German peoples, the beauty of their country and their, their people and beliefs. Same thing with Russia and atrocities there, all of the things of the misconceptions of World War II, which leads you to, to learn about before as much as you can about World War I. And then to the before times, that's very difficult now. It was easier, I wish I had done more digging into the before time in my teen years, but I got a bit wrapped up too much just in the agenda to, against white people. And, and I also got it a little bit, that sort of led me into the depopulation agendas. And I got very into the Georgia, the Georgia Guidestones. I got very into UN Agenda 21, back when it was just called Agenda 21. And the Good Guys Club with Bill Gates back then and Oprah Winfrey, this like early 2000s, you know? And I, and I forgot, I said to myself, you know, history is just repeating itself here. We have this sort of Fourth Reich implications of the, the bad guys. But I hate to even deem it and call it Fourth Reich, you know, as, as many people do. And there's very much a bad guy behind the scenes and all of that. But there also is the underlying truth that they've always used. That's why I always talk about the Archons. And the Archons have their hands in, in every side of that. Because the Archons in themselves built was real. They, they had the entire script already done beforehand to steal the lands over there. Because the Archons know all about the chakras and all about everything of the ancient times. And they are part of the Roman Empire, they are part of the entire Pharisees and all of that that plotted against Jesus. They have their claws and roots in Mother Earth, in organic life here and in our poor playscape. And of course, in deep seated into humanity for a long, long time. Jesus knew this. As you read against his teachings. I think one thing that he didn't quite realize and/or perhaps couldn't bring forth because we weren't ready to even grasp it yet. And so we can't realize through his words. And so maybe I'm assuming he didn't realize. Maybe it's just too big to even bring down into that time again, which is kind of why I started talking about what the people were like at that time and what compared to what we are like now. On many levels, you know, the conscious capacity for understanding things, like a metaphor, it could have been different. And also, you know, just their physical bodies and, you know, the types of toxins, parasites they're exposed to, bacteria, different multitudes of hygienic practices and, and stuff like that. Not to mention just being in a completely different aspect of cosmologically, astrolabe speaking with light and shadow availability of spectrum, different rays of light and quality of light available and hitting Earth and being sent down for reasons of difference to build up to where we are now, right? And so like the workings and the things that they were going through and the processes that they needed to cleanse and purge are different than what we need now. I think the model of the truth is still the same. And we really do need to keep up with and find the right ways of Jesus's teachings through fasting, correct eating, meditation, prayer. You know, all of these things that we still need to do. We still very much need to be healing and working actively to find that within ourselves. But I think maybe the overall crises isn't in the physical vessel anymore like it was back then and in all the physical implications. The crises is in the spirit now and in the minded conscious layers as to where our focus needs to be and to where unfortunately the focus of the negative of Satan, of the devil, whatever you want to see has been and has sort of gotten into and is now erupting out of and where the newest world is and where the second coming comes from and where the promise of he comes, he will come back to save us all. Sort of is this next round is the purging of the things within us as of the devils and demons, the shadows of Satan, the parasites and unclean toxins within our bodies. And that's on a multitude of levels. That's metaphorically and literally. And I think that's a big reason why Rockefeller got hijacked, I mean Rockefeller hijacked and the medical industry got hijacked. And holistic approach was totally avoided and gotten rid of. And so was the naturopathic because they wanted to pigeonhole and corral medical care and get everybody away from realizing how big of an issue parasites and these kind of things really are. Because they knew that they were upgrading the conscious takeover war. Their intent and attention was going to be on this sort of micronano levels and to, and to take that deeper negatively aligned conscious systems and control into those smaller levels as well so that they can try to get even deeper control, these sort of micro levels. So because they can't really, they cannot have control of us. And they certainly can't get control of the mind-body-spirit complex in totality. It's too big for them. It's not a match. If they ever chose to just own their own light, they would find the matches that are right for them and embody those things fully. But because they're choosing this sort of parasitic life, they can't, it goes against the laws of service for them. But again, this is a sort of a truth and a promise to us that it can never fully overtake us and there's always a way out. And I think this is kind of maybe what he died for our sins back then means. It's sort of like the upgrade, it's kind of like the crossover to say like the new next people, the next generations of humans, the next sort of mind-body-spirit complex that comes, it won't be able to be totally overtaken by the physical badness and evilness as to where it can totally kill us out. You know, it will be this time around always available for us to purge and cleanse and to choose to get rid of them. We have the sovereign power to do the healing and the righteousness for ourselves. Anytime and every time we choose to. To do the healing and the rightness for ourselves, um anytime and every time we choose to. I think. And I'm seeing this sort of confirmation more and more as I'm reading more and more and more as I'm doing more deep dives and. Um I think. In this time, in this life, I am and we are meant to sort of find the new integrations and to find these new ways to heal ourselves and to find. The truth and the teachings that we can apply to our world and um. It's it's a big struggle for me because I so much in in a lot of his teachings and in a lot of the basic. Sort of esoteric spiritual teachings. There you look at the ascens, even. I mean, you can look at the occult world and see it so strict in the restrictive um occult world. Of the closed doors and the veil and the stepping behind the curtain and you have to do all of these sort of rituals and routines to be sort of um. Initiated, right, into these into these deeper and deeper realms. And I think that the initiations, those they have been so, it's such a tool that has been hijacked. And it's kind of like, okay, we're done with that now. It's not even necessary because the only thing that was ever needed to be initiated is the will. And and the want and the intention of service. It's all that need, that was sort of the gateway to these next levels. It's always like, okay, you just needed. You need the prerequisite knowledge, yeah, but it's the it's the will to seek more. That's really the key to the next gateway. And for positively aligned free serving, seeking, it should always be. You know, but but what we see is is with the negative alignment is that that's never enough. It has to be a sacrificial right. It has to be uh cutting away of more of you. In allegiance and alliance to the to this bigger um club. Whatever the club is, the highest, they usually have a high pinnacle point of the club as well, like a in an inverted version of God. It's so funny how it's like you can't even get away from the model. You wanna pretend like you're, don't believe in God or you wanna pretend like you're higher than a God or. Or whatever it is, or you're the closest to the actual God out there. And yet you're closing the doors to his all. Creating this for this s- s- smaller version of it and then placing yourself in his position there. And then trying to have everybody else confirm your position of him in the secret closed-off space. So much so that everybody could just forget about the outside there. And that's not right. You know? Uh the only way that that's right, the only time that that becomes okay to do. Is when we remember open all the windows and the doors to that sort of room that everybody's in with this pinnacle person representing God. To where the sun shines in and that person in himself says, I, when I use the word I. I am saying a uniting I. I am using the I as a great reflection of you as all, as that we are one. And that I serve you as I would serve myself, as I serve the great infinite creator and as he has birthed and serves us all. As he created us to do. And that we are all the same and that at any moment here in my pinnacle point, I, this preacher, I, this great representation on the stool. Because I've done this for so long, I'll, I could, would, should and may step down and let any one of you stand here and lead today. And speak your truths, speak out how you feel, that what is shining upon you, how God is speaking through you today. And I'll sit in the pew and I will sit right there because our seats are interchangeable. Because I can, I can learn so much by sitting here today. I'm not threatened. I'm not worried that I'll never stand there again at that front piece. I don't. Have a care in the world as to where I sit because in each place that I sit, God has sat me there. And for that reason, there's a purpose because I'm looking out of my eyes at this perspective at this moment. I can learn something from everyone around me. Because in his most humbleness, in his greatest awareness, God Creator, infinite source, I feel I know. He enjoys every moment of learning from looking out each eye. That's the point of it. It's literally the point. And yes, yes, I do think and I do know, he looks occasionally. Out every eye. Good and bad, up and down, every single one. And it's funny because even those who would deny him, even those who say he doesn't exist or isn't there. He's still looking up. That's why I just, I can't help but laugh. I can't help but feel secure. In my approach and in my promise. And that always cements me back into sort of, you know, service to others and in the golden rule. And feeling good and positive, doing what feels good for me and what is best for, you know, myself and my family. And um. I think. We collectively are getting there, you know, more and more of us are saying we just want. Whatever, we don't care about all of the. Puzzles, the charades, the to-do, like we just want the simple, good life. You know, we want simply to just raise our children, to live happily and to be left alone. You know, uh. So I think I'm pretty much wrapping it up here. I've kind of gone around, around about. Talk about a few of the things that have been popping up in my world here in the last couple of weeks while I've started. Uh this real. Journey and partnership, you know, opening myself up to um. You know, what could be, I guess, um. So yeah, I'm gonna leave it there on this episode and um. Oh well, yeah, I'm not even sure if I'm gonna air these, so I don't know. Making like a whole exit conversation, but. Yeah, I hate to just stop talking at the same time if I do wanna put those up, so. Thank you for listening. If I do share these, I appreciate your audience and uh if I'm just talking to my own inner world. Thank you as always for listening as we air out our troubles. Sending my love. Talk to you next time.